County Attorney and Commissioner Powell and I met Friday and we were talking about our ongoing problem that's starting to occur in mainly in Commissioner Powell's precinct. And that is holding tanks versus septic systems. The rules are pretty explanatory whenever it comes to who can and who can't use holding tanks. And we have companies that are either just taking it upon themselves to put in these holding tanks or trying to get the county to approve holding tanks that may or may not necessarily be fall underneath the rules of the federal state of Texas. And this is a guideline that I have put together after discussion. I asked her if I could put something together. She said, the county attorney said, yeah, that it'd be nice to have some type of procedures that we work out of our office. It doesn't need any action right now unless at another time y'all decide we're going to charge for this and then it would need some type of formal action. And that's just FYI for y'all.
Public hearing before now, one, two, three, nothing to comment, questions, anyone have any questions, public, all may comment. At this time, I've been requested to take item thirteen. Thank you, Mark.
I reviewed some strategy in the past year of holding tanks. Last October, we put together a resolution to the general, agenda twenty-one, put some information in the boxes, and I'd like to request that you guys sign a resolution against the twenty-one, or permission to grant a grant.
We looked over at the city of Hope and several of our residents have asked us to look at something very similar. We started looking into it. And especially when it comes to different types of grant applications and things like that, there's a lot of some of these sustainable requirements and things that are put in these grants. And we found it very important to start looking deeply into that. This is one way for us to announce that we weren't going to be involved in any of this. I mean, actually, we turned down some of the grants from the federal agency because the things attached to it, different types of sustainable development, I guess that's the word they keep using up over and over again, about basically with farmers, what they can and can't do with their title and their land and things like that. So we felt it was very important. Our citizens agreed and we would like to see the county adopt something very similar to what we had adopted.
It's my understanding, I don't know if I can say that I'm an expert, but in the stretch of the United Nations, is that it's something that was approved by the United It has not been approved by our Senate. It is not something that tomorrow or next year is necessarily going to, or anytime in the near future, going to be a major immediate threat. But it is something that is, in my opinion, against the basis of our constitution. And it is something that, as Pope did, that I think that the county probably ought to make a stand early because if we have a number of entities throughout the nation that take the stand, if and when the point comes that it comes before our national representatives, the statement would be made that would turn away from this approach. So that's my two cents.
It's kind of going under the radar. If you ask most people, nobody knows that. They're not trying to promulgate this out and everybody knows that. And if they can get it far enough along, then it won't be stoppable and that's, you know. If you talk about what would this, you know, Wilson County or Pope, trying to get, you gotta change the sign if they want to block, you know, or if you want to go to other counties and try to promulgate this, contacts together there. So, I'm ready for that. You need to have Commissioner Wallace. Would you put in the press up or did you pull?
Many a lot of people would be like, say it's so conspiracy, you know, this is, you know, black helicopter. It's not what it's about. It's about giving information that even remotely any of this is true, what we read and do this stuff. It's important for the citizens to know what's going on and make the decision for themselves. But it's about giving information out there for everyone to know and to see here.
The basis of it, when you look into the future, looks like a really bad science fiction movie.
It's hard to even believe when you look at some of the things that's set apart. You can go to the United Nations website and there's a paper there, it's about three hundred and fifteen page paper. And it's, basically, the idea is sustainability. It sounds good and it's over six hundred cities have signed on. Here in Texas, you have San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, Aurora, Austin have already signed on for this. And you have to wonder when you read the documents, why on the world would they do this? It's not good for their people. It's because they are sold, but this is good because don't you want your children to, don't you want your children, grandchildren, to have the earth like you got it? And it sounds good and everything, but it's all about control. And one of the biggest things is they intend to have population control right now. And this is not just the United States, this is worldwide. They intend to draw the population from seven billion where we are now to five hundred million. That's a ninety percent drop. That means seven people out of a hundred, if you're going with that, let the others go right now. And then they have population control, they just eliminate how many children you have and then let the old ones die, all of them get down to that level. And another big thing is that they think that everybody should have eaten, all the resources that, whatever you have, so you need to sort of take them to reach the four states. This is pure capitalism, certainly.
I think the biggest thing for the county is to protect our private property rights. And this is a time for the farmers, ranchers, and that liking. That's one of the things that we've got to talk about, right? The farms are no longer private, they're on your land, it's not your land.
There will have been, present, you have been part of a complex, huge, miles for it. And things will happen in a year, and we'll put it in the U.S. and I have cars and I have land. It's only a personal thing, of course, but all the things that are concerned are not sustainable. And that's, I think you said it very well. It sounds like a science fiction play, like this could not possibly happen. The problem is, if we ignore it, and again, you were right all ago, it's not going to affect us. It's definitely not going to affect me. Probably even not my children. This is going to be a very slow thing, but my grandkids may, by then they get grown, may be seeing some of these things. And it's not, I don't, in my opinion, and all my reading, it's not good. And Pope did it, he did, but this would be, again, even if you try to get, uh, Laverne and Spock to help, and there's already someone working on it, of course.
It's sort of like the old question about how do you eat an elephant? You know, one bite of the lion, this is one little bite, Pope's a bite. I'll make a motion, Judge, that we do the resolution.
We're going to start the read of resolution. Resolution, State of Texas, County of Wilson, rejection of the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Whereas the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One is a comprehensive plan in extreme environmentalism, social engineering, and global political control that was initiated at the United Nations Conference on Environment and Development, UNCED, held in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, in nineteen ninety-two. And whereas the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One again overtly pushed into the local community throughout the United States of America through the International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives, through local sustainable development policies such as smart growth, wetlands, projects, resident cities, resilient cities, regional visioning projects, and other green and alternative projects. And whereas the United Nations Plan of Radical So-Called Sustainable Development views the American Way of Life of private property ownership, single-family homes, private car ownership, individual travel choices, and privately owned farms, all as destructive to the environment. And whereas according to the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, policy social justice is described as the right and opportunity for all people to benefit equally from the resources afforded us by society and the environment, which would be accomplished by socialism, communist redistribution of wealth. Whereas according to the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, policy national sovereignty is deemed a social injustice, and therefore be it resolved by the Wilson County, Texas District Court. The court recognized the destructive and insidious nature of the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, hereby exposes to the public and public policymakers the dangerous intent of the plan. It is further resolved that neither the United States government nor any state or any local government is legally bound by the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One treaty in that it has never been endorsed by the United States Senate. It is further resolved that the federal government and state and local governments across the country be well informed of the underlying harmful implications and implementation of the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, destructive strategies for sustainable development. And we hereby endorse rejection of its radical policies and rejection of any grant monies attached to it. I have motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
And... Thank you very, very much.
President Bush the elder did sign, as did Clinton. Son, President Bush, and all of them.
Many of these things take no different character after they're passed. People jump on them and utilize them for different reasons. Like I said, when you talk about somebody signing on to it, like I said, a lot of times you sign on something, it has to take roles a lot to it.
Yeah, one time they did. One of the real crazy things about this is they intend to take seventy-five, eighty percent of the land, and just make it off limits to us. And then, you know, these areas around it, where they're limited access to it, so if you take seventy-five, eighty percent of land, that's quite a bit.
Most of Texas.
I just caution to look whenever, I know y'all have a grant application at the bottom, just look at those things, because that's where we find a lot of the stuff, with very in its name, you have to do this or that, and you take, you set these grants in the fine print, and you have to do a lot of reading to find those things. But there was a lot of grants that were sent to us to, a top, didn't apply for, and we didn't do that because we tried to read and then they were sent to us. So I do actually have to caution whenever we accept these grants. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Item six, Edwin Baker, Wilson County, tomorrow morning, discuss the blue list and the bar man.
Oh, we lit.
Sorry, let it. Got back on there. We'll put it on next, uh, public, Commissioner, earlier, that I really didn't have plans to put it on there this weekend, Wiley, but we'll look at it again at the first meeting tonight.
Now, item seven, call five, Commissioner Precinct Two, excepted, disaster relief fund, grant seven, one, two, one, five, seven, are all the material for precinct number two.
Sure, so I've got three bid proposals, AKA O trucking for a hundred dollars per ton, RAP repeat transport, a dollar ten, and C trucking, a hundred and seventeen a ton. So the AKA O trucking for a hundred dollars a ton. I make a motion.
Motion, Commissioner Powell, second. Comments, all in favor?
Aye. Item eight, discuss, take, discuss and take action on soil and water stewardship week proclamation. Soil and water stewardship week, two thousand thirteen proclamation, whereas fertile soil and clean water provide us with the daily sustenance, and whereas effective conservation practices have helped provide a rich standard of living. Whereas our security is dependent upon healthy soil and clean water, and whereas stewardship calls for each person to help conserve these precious resources. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim, April twenty-eighth, May fifth, two thousand thirteen, soil and water stewardship week. Motion, Commissioner. File, second. Wiley, all in favor?
Aye.
And...
All the way to the brink, come here. Please.
Thorn and Gray's Architects, P L L C, on the Wilson County courthouse. You have anything on that?
Um, Lindsey and I had sat down and reworked them, and I said, we had a joint agreement. We sat down and negotiated both the original courthouse and the library so that we could have all three of those contracts completed. And Tyler, the judge...
You have it for more?
She's gone. So she did two.
Is there any follow-up?
No, no. We, we kind of backed up to the original AIA contracts and then went through each and every section of that, and only made the changes to the AIA that we both agreed to. I worked out, they took the, they took the sitting down and gone through it. They're ready to go.
Motion? Commissioner Powell, second. Mr. Morales, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir. That's the name, Nancy, Judge. Mine was the courthouse and the local library.
You've worked closely with the Victor staff on all this, too?
Yes, sir, I have. In fact, the changes, many of the changes that were made were actually the suggestions of Denise Cheney with Victor staff and change. I will say, after her refusal of the original contract, I was saying, I mean, that was her suggestion, she could go back to the original AIA, you know, and change it. It was, there's so many modifications to the contract that it was very difficult to track, which was actually in the contract.
Yeah. We took, goes together, nine and ten, a motion was made by Paul, Mr. Morales, and second, and you know, so... Item ten, discuss take action on standard form of agreement between Wilson County, was that one.
Those were the two, Judge.
Discuss and take action on resolution authorized by County Judge, or his destiny to implement Section Three paragraph subject. Raise to extent feasible will provide job training, employment, and contracting opportunities for Section Three businesses of the area in which the Texas Community Development Block Grant is being carried out. A resolution of the Commission's Court of County of Wilson, Texas, authorized the County Judge, or his destiny, to implement a Section Three program which, to the greatest extent feasible, will provide job training, employment, and contracting opportunities for Section Three businesses of the area in which the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Project is being carried out. Whereas Wilson, the County of Wilson has been funded under the Texas Community Development Program, and whereas the County of Wilson is required to adopt a Section Three program as part of the requirements of the grants. And whereas a Section Three resident is defined as a public housing resident or a low to very low income person who lives in the area where the Texas Community Development Block Grant Assist Project is located. Whereas a Section Three business is defined as a business that has a Section Three resident on at least fifty-one percent or more of the businesses, or have at least thirty percent of the permanent full-time employees of the business identified as Section Three residents. Whereas the Wilson, the County of Wilson is required to obtain goals of compliance with Section Three regulation. And therefore, be it resolved that the Commission's Court of Wilson County, one, the Commission's Court has reviewed and hereby agrees to implement the following steps, which, to the greatest extent feasible, will provide job training, employment, and contracting opportunities to Section Three residents and Section Three businesses of the area in which the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Project is being carried out. The Commission's Court hereby agrees to strive to attain goals of compliance with Section Three regulations by increasing opportunities for employment and contracting with Section Three residents and businesses where feasible. The Commission's Court hereby agrees to assign duties related to implementation of this plan to the designated Section Five Oh Four Equal Opportunity Fair Housing Auction. The Commission's Court hereby agrees that the county will notify Section Three residents and businesses concerned of potential new employment and contracting opportunities as they are triggered by the Texas Community Development Block Grant Awards through the use of public hearings, related advertising, public notices, bidding advertising, and bid documents, local advertising media, including public signage, and including Section Three policies, and its Texas Community Development Block Grant socializations and contracts. The Commission's Court hereby agrees to maintain a list of those businesses that have identified themselves as Section Three businesses for utilization of the Texas Community Development Block Grant funding procedures, notify those businesses of pending contractual opportunities, and make this list available for general grant recipient procurement needs. The Commission's Court hereby agrees to maintain a list of those persons who have identified themselves as Section Three residents and contact those persons when hiring, training, opportunities are available through either the grant recipient or contractor. The Commission's Court hereby agrees to require that the prime contractor and subcontractor of the Texas Community Development Projects and Contracts over a hundred thousand dollars commit to the plan as part of their contract work. Monitor the contractor's performance with respect to meeting Section Three requirements and require that he submit reports as may be required to the grant recipient. The Commission's Court hereby agrees to submit reports as required by the Texas Development, Community Development Block Grant regarding contracting and Section Three businesses and other employment as they occur, and submit reports within twenty days of calendar year end which identifies qualified Section Three businesses and employees. The Commission's Court hereby agrees to maintain records for the Texas Community Development Program, including copies and correspondence, memorandum, and so forth, which documents all actions taken to comply with Section Three regulations. As officers and representatives of the Wilson County Commission's Court, we are now signed, have read and fully agreed that it becomes a party to the full implementation of the program, whereas identifying what the Section Three is. To implement a Section Three program which...
Just on what you said, the bids and proposals, that you have to advertise and all that, that's what it means.
Oh, but what is Section Three?
I thought that's what it means.
Low income.
Huh? Low income?
Want to establish that?
It doesn't say. Let's have a list, do we have anything?
Huh?
Let me go ahead, I don't want you to got anything with you.
It's just something that you have to, every time you apply for a grant.
That's a little bit more longer than somebody else.
You know, it might, so, such as, like, grants, they can only use, publish, notice, you have to also post, like, if you have a Section Three housing, you have to post their, the public notices that you're applying, and then they're on.
Judge, if you read that again, I might pick it up a second. You know, sometimes the person pick up more by reaction.
By reading by show?
Let Mr. Wiley read it.
Please read it to us.
We can get the courtroom, we'll all read it. One time over. Whereas, says, defines... What? Up in, whereas, upper, the upper part defines, what, section?
Section Three.
Section Three. Section Three, resident is defined as a public housing resident and are a low, very low income person who lives in the area. Not a lot of explanation. But that's our grant writers' sentence. Motion, Commissioner, comments, Commissioner. Wiley, all in favor?
Aye.
We just keep all the records.
Eva? No, it was recorded. I think we have one... I think we have one, what was it, when Ms. Kibbe was doing it, since we got a, since we got a new grant writer, I think you have to apply again and go through all those steps.
Item twelve, Dana J. Baldwin, county attorney, consider take action on asking agreement for net data for hot check prosecution package.
Originally, when the court entered into its agreement with net data for the county, that package was included. At some point, Mr. Wilson decided that he was going to continue with the Hill Country software that he had and ceased to use the net data package, and then they removed that from the system. I need it reinstated into the system because I had the intention of filing the hot checks as the class A's and B's and not reducing them to class C's. So the Hill Country software that he was using isn't going to facilitate that. This package would allow us to input the information that would actually make it easier for Ms. Martinez's office when those cases are filed with her, because it allows us to enter in a personal ID screen so that their data is in there and it will facilitate us pursuing them as a class A's and B's instead of reducing them to class C's.
So there's no charge to it?
There will be a charge, that to set it back up, I think it was, it's going to come out to about five thousand, although I hadn't talked to Ron about this, but there is funds in the county attorney, what was the county attorney fee account that it would be paid out of.
Consideration of the price, system shall be a one-time, a one-time charge of twenty-five hundred dollars. The first annual renewal shall be three thousand dollars, subsequent renewals at the discretion of the last.
It's, it'll tie back into your original contract.
Is this going to be more efficient from the standpoint of our merchants in the area as far as collecting those checks that come to you?
It's going to be more efficient through our office because what was it, from the best I can understand, the hot checks, when Mr. Wilson would receive the hot checks, those would actually be pursued within the JP Courts as a class C. And there are thousands and thousands of those checks still outstanding. My intention is to, through this software, because the Hill Country software will allow me to do that, notify the individuals of their hot check, give them a period of time within which they can come into our office and clear that up so that we can collect restitution for the merchant. Should they fail to do so, then I would pursue those, those checks as class A and class B misdemeanors within the county court, which would then essentially tie in, they, they could end up on probation, still able to collect the restitution for the merchant, but at that point they would also incur court costs and fines and, and other penalties to write you a hot check that you can't do in a JP court.
Would motivate them to curate?
My hope is, it will, it will, yes, give quite a motivation. There are quite a few checks, of course, in my office that were filed as class C's and unfortunately I can't do anything about those, but from January one going forward, there are actually checks from merchants that I've been holding in my office since January one in attempt to get this lined out with net data so that I can follow them in a fashion to take them to the county court. So yeah, after four months of restitution, I would like to.
So they're, so they're going to come in and do that for you all?
They will, they will add that back into the package. It shows still as part of the package for the county attorney's office, but we don't have a license to use it, and so they will reissue the license to use that software and they're going to come in, part of that fee is them to come in and now train the office now in how to use it so that we can more efficiently prosecute these cases but keep them on a county court level as opposed to reducing them to a justice court level.
That twenty-five hundred dollar fee is for home site training, hot check, twenty-five hours, so that be here, come back, train. Motion, Commissioner, file, Commissioner Wiley, all in. Item fourteen, Man Loudes Desert Mountain Corporation Dust Control County Roads, we're already working in Karnes County.
Yes. Good morning. We'll take what you get this time. Wanted to introduce myself. We are down in Karnes County right now, we're working in Rose County, we're doing over forty miles of county roads in that area. We've got environmental friendly products, we've got a large array of different products for dust control. As we were going to, as I was overhearing you guys talk, water is a pretty scarce commodity in this area, and when you start comparing the cost of water, new roads versus doing some dust control for some long-term results, I mean, we could do anything from a three-month short-term or, or a maintenance program where we're coming back every six to eight months when you start comparing the cost, and the overall savings that you do to the roads, I think would be very competitive to what, what most people are doing now. We're using Texas products, we're using environmentally friendly products, you know, from living the self-aid, which is a really good comparison to, to any kind of binder that you're finding in your roads. As we all know, we, the biggest problem with dust is it means your roads come apart, you're grinding on any item that you got, and that's just probably the dust. We've got the binders, they're totally environmentally friendly, we've got enhanced polymers. There's, throw a lot of big words out there. Basically, all I'm saying is, we support products when they're safer roads. Come from more cost efficient, when you save roads, you're not continuously adding more I D, adding more base stuff. Wanted to make an impression, we are down here in the area. I've got a road down in Karnes County, we've done one point three miles, then on February first, so almost three months ago, and we still have to do roads on that road. And they had three rigs going on there, they fracked all three rigs, and they've done a couple of workovers, so as you guys well know, that's a pretty busy road that we, with just that activity, not including the normal day-to-day activity.
You, you might give the number of that road and words, add any one of the commissioners to do their own.
Okay, yeah, I could do that. It's definitely, it's, county number one eighty-four, it's directly five miles south of Karn City, on Highway ninety, ninety-nine, I'm sorry. And it's county number one eighty-four, and if anyone needs me to go show it to you, I have no problem taking you down to it. I could explain what the procedures were. We've got, like I said, an array of topical applications to blade mixes, to mixtures. We've got all our own equipment, so I've noticed, I was on, over there stocking the other day, and I noticed you folks already have some equipment, you're doing some road work a little later in that area. So we've got from curfew program to just selling you the product, whatever you want. We have computerized activity trucks, and we can tell you within a hundredth of a gallon as to what we're putting down per square yard. I did speak to one of the individual over there, and he said you guys did have a, had a, a shoo-beer truck already, so that's something that they already have. We understand that, we come in, sell product, same way, do some consulting and that, but it's, it's a safety factor too. I know moving down into the, in South Texas now, and bringing my forty-year-old son and Peter standing on the side of the road with some of these, some of these drivers going by and dust, I probably wouldn't feel very happy with him, wait for a bus on the side. I want to take him to Pope, get the drugs. So, so that, that's pretty much why I do what I do.
What does it cost?
Costs vary, depends on what you're looking at. I mean, it can be anywhere from thirty-six cents per square yard applying some basic Texas mag chloride all the way up to eighty-six, ninety-six cents per square yard, and this is delivered implied pricing. Like I say, it depends on what kind of, what kind of strength you're wanting, what exactly you are wanting. I mean, it, it varies. We can go from a complicated, bring in our mixtures, three blades, and all our rollers, and it's going to cost you about a dollar fifty-six per square yard, but from there, I mean, it can come all the way down to us delivering product, and you apply it yourself, and come down to close to thirty-six or even forty cents per square yard. And like I say, with the variety of products we've got, it's just what you really want. We can be really, we can just copy the dust control to soil stabilization, to, to maintenance we do, and we can do, we've done some services for some chopper landings where we're doing them down, so like I say, it just depends on what you want to pay and what you want.
How quick can the traffic go on?
We're usually trying to get traffic done, there have been forty-five minutes.
If you want to come back and talk to us, we're going to go ahead and take an item right now so Leanne can leave, or if you're finished, they can contact you, whichever you want.
Whatever work does for you. Do you want me to come back? I can sit back.
Y'all got all the information you need?
I got all the information I can get from.
Okay.
Excellent. Appreciate the presentation.
Yes, for once.
Yes, and yeah, anytime you can, if you come in, just please.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Item eighteen, item A, recycling and collection events.
I believe the, the two contract items, which would be number one and number four, we're going to go ahead and table that. Now Davis looking on some changes, and they have to be forwarded to the vendors yet for their, uh, people, so we can table eighteen, A, one, and four.
Item two, discuss take action on request approval to set up a new fund for recycling.
We did, Leanne and I had talked about it, we did, we do the recycling and then we do the collections, and we've kind of been running it through whatever account that, you know, where it's, where the event is held or whatever, we were thinking that it might be more efficient and a lot easier to track if we were to set up a separate fund for the recycling and the events, just to track the information so that, especially with the recycling.
Did we take two and three together?
Yes.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, Commissioner Gomez, all in. Item B is discuss take action on utility line permit for four sixty-six Oak Hills Water four, County Road three oh one.
I've talked with him already, Jerry.
Motion, Commissioner, file, second, Commissioner Gomez, all in favor. Item C, discuss take action on pipeline permit application, permit number fifty-four, Hunt Oil, Justine, and Flowline.
I've met with him.
And Mr. Wiley, second, Commissioner Wiley, all in. And D is just for information only. And D is for information only, temporary water line application, Hunt Oil, Shep, or one H at County Road four fifty-four, one quarter mile south of County Road two fifty-two, information only. Thank you, Mrs. Leanne, and be careful. Okay, item nineteen, financial report. You want to go back? Why, we got like thirteen on that one. Judge Jackson? Fifteen? Fifteen? Oh, this one was sixteen, then we'll come back to fifteen. Victor Jackson, County Road, state P, got some purchase of a F U J I T, F U F I, six one, three oh two, heat fed scanner, and a thousand twenty-nine dollars, four cents from Justice Court of Texas.
Is that some fancy name for a registered quarter horse?
Okay, what it is, is the justice courts have available to them a technology fund, and rather than coming out of our regular budget, but to use this technology fund, it has to be approved by the commission of court.
Motion, Commissioner Maris, Commissioner Wiley, all in.
All right. Thank you.
You know how to write it?
Need somebody to break it in, let me know.
Item fifteen, discuss take action on following bid received, Line Bar, Road and Clarion Sampson, L L P, and it's, cause number ten dash zero five dash zero zero two three, two two three, C V W, two point six acres of the Alamo Gury Survey five oh, five eleven County Road thirteen, eighteen, Southern Springs, Texas, account number zero zero twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero seven zero, so, zero. B. Cause number zero zero dash zero one dash zero zero two three, C V W, lot one, unit forty-three, Lake Valley Estate, nine oh two, Fall Brook, La Vernea, Texas, account number two zero nine three nine slash zero seven five eight dash four three zero zero one dash zero zero one zero zero. And item C is cause number one two dash one two dash zero zero four one dash C V W, semicolon one point zero four acres, A J, Ohio Survey, four sixty, County Road four eighty-three, Nixon, Texas, account number zero three one six, zero 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 dash zero one four, zero zero slash zero three one six, dash zero 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 dash zero one four oh one. Motion. Or anybody, have any questions for, on those items? Here's a, that's a, we're looking.
I think he meant the zero.
Yeah.
You want to go back? Just in case it's one, zero, put it in where you want it. For the, for the public's benefit, on item one, the two point six acres in the Alamo Gury Survey on five eleven County Road three eighteen, Southern Springs, the bid received was eleven thousand two hundred dollars, of which sixty-nine percent of that goes to Florida School District, and thirty-one percent to Wilson County, and the court cost of nine hundred seventy-one dollars. Or, item two, it's, lot one, unit forty-three in Lake Valley Estates, the bid received was twenty-five hundred dollars.